The Seminole Airport Authority. Roll call, please.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and Action of Consent Agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda, and we don't have any appearances or petitions from the audience for the airport authority, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right, we will move into the regular meeting of the Seminole Gas Authority. Roll call, please.
Larry Church.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and Action of Consent Agenda. Roll call, please.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right. Jay, are you keeping up over there?
Clearly.
We will now go to the regular meeting of the Seminole Municipal Authority. Roll call, please.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Consideration and Action of Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience, we will move on to approvals and acceptances. Under bids, item one. Consideration and possible action to approve the sole bid of $65,805 from B&amp;H Construction in Norman, Oklahoma, for the installation of a 20-inch steel bore pipe under Highway 9 for a new sewer line, a non-budgeted item to be funded from grant proceeds of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Is this the one we were going to do for the hotel initially?
Actually, is that good? Testing one, two, three? So, actually, yes, but it's also going to serve the new development, the new development that, I think we approved it last month or month before. The Seminole Town Center is the planned unit development that is going to have a lot of new housing. The strip mall, if you've been by the new high school, you've seen the concrete already being poured. So, this just gives us an avenue to get them sewer. And so, we'll get into a little bit more detail in just a few minutes, if that's all right.
Motion to approve.
No.
Roll call, please.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item two. Consideration and possible action to approve payment of invoice number three from Wall Engineering for $186,894 for engineering services related to the new wastewater treatment plant, with payment to be made from the proceeds of the bridge loan line of credit at First United Bank. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item three. Consideration and possible action to approve the sole bid of $267,809 from West Tech in Salt Lake City, Utah, for repairs to the clarifier at the wastewater treatment plant, to be funded from insurance proceeds held in Special Projects Fund 92, May 2022 tornado damages.
Will be approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no further items in the Seminole Municipal Authority, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Oh.
Second. Second.
Whatever.
How about all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. All right, we will move on to the regular meeting of the Seminole City Council. Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a forum.
Please stand as we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the cheerleading, prayer, please.
My father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to come to serve our great city. God, I ask you to bless this meeting and bless our decisions and our discussions. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Consideration and Action of Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda and no appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole City Council, we'll move on to approvals and acceptances. Under bids, item one. Consideration and possible action to approve the sole bid of $419,704 for replacement of HVAC units on city properties, to be fully funded from grant proceeds with no cost or reimbursement to the city. Please.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
I believe the question was asked, what projects is this specifically going to?
Yeah, I think there are several buildings included in the grant. I think specific, this building that we're in, the Reynolds Wellness Center, is included. Sharon, are there some at the PD as well?
So we went out for a bid on all the buildings, and we did not come up with any bids. So we found someone who could at least replace the units here. The $419,000 is to replace five of the eight units on this building, and there will be enough leftover from the grant to replace two other units. And we'll figure out which ones are worse and which ones will replace those.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I just have a comment.
Please.
I just want to say, thank you to Sharon and her team and Steve for giving, always giving your due diligence and finding these grants to help fund these things that otherwise, if we didn't have those, we would have to take it from our budget, which is always very competitive for things that are needing those funds. So, the fact that you go out, look for these grants, and you get them, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer. Yes. Motion passes.
Move on to resolutions. Item two. Consideration and possible action to approve Resolution Number 2022-12, a resolution allowing proceeds from long-term camping fees at Sportsman's Lake to be deposited to a fund dedicated to lake improvements from November 2nd, 2022, through March 1st, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item three. Consideration and possible action to approve Resolution Number 2022-13, a resolution authorizing the preparation and submission of one of the OWRB-ARPA grant applications.
Question.
Please.
Explain what that is.
Okay. I don't know if you heard that or not, but
I didn't.
The question was, would you please explain to the council and the public what exactly the OWRB-ARPA?
Of course.
Grant is?
Oklahoma Water Resources Board received some of the ARPA money from the federal government, and they turned around and issued grants, are issuing grants, to cities and counties. The size of our city, we can apply for up to $2 million, but it is a 50/50 match. So, we are looking at the possibility of using this grant to purchase AMR meters, automatic meter readers, that will help the city in the water department. And it will be one, it's 1.4 million, which means there is a match of about 750,000. This match does not have to be this year. It can be any time in the next three years. So, we do have time.
So, one of the things we looked at several years ago was automating our water meters through a company that would come in and said they could almost guarantee that we'd get them replaced for free because of the out-of-calibration or old meters that we had. At that time, they said that, well, ours weren't out far enough where it would be profitable for them to basically replace those. So, understand now, we still have, that doesn't mean that everything was in calibration. We know we still have some meters that are out. But it also then helps, where it would be automated and come into the city, would someone have to drive by and pick up those readings? But it would be automatic and delivered directly to the water office, to where? Okay. You want to add anything else to that? Or is that pretty much the gist of it?
That is excellent. Yeah, this is just for the grant application.
Right, right.
We're not sure that we're going to get it, but this is something that we've been after for several years. As you know, anytime we get an opportunity to leverage our money with grants, we try to do that, so.
Mayor, I have a question.
Please.
So, Sharon, you'd mentioned that it was, the match would be about 750,000. So, has there been any, or are we able to tell that going to the auto meter readers, would that save the city money? Like, maybe is that where, like, some of that 750 is going to come from?
So, replacing our meters now with automatic meter readers, and I'm getting into Bryant Baker's kind of field right now, but yes, it would definitely save the city some money. That, and the meters that we have currently are no longer manufactured. They're outdated, and all, they're wanting, most manufacturers of meters are wanting everyone to go to automatic meter readers. So, that's what they're mass producing.
And again, this is just to go out for the grant. It has, we still have a long ways to go before we would decide what it would be and how much we would be required to match, so. Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under ordinances, item four. Consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 1274 through 1282, ordinances adopting the 2021 edition of the International Building Code. Which includes several different sections, from electrical to building, roofing, and what, there was plumbing? Or is it?
HVAC, yes.
Okay.
All of that.
All right.
Second.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. All right, roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under approvals and acceptances, item 4A. I better take a drink of water before I start reading all these. Consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 1283, an ordinance amending ordinance number 1036 of the City of Seminole, Oklahoma, providing for extending the term of the levy of an existing 1-cent excise tax for the purpose of constructing, equipping, operating, and maintaining a family entertainment center and family entertainment and recreational center facility, financing capital improvements for the city and economic development within the, within or near the city, retiring certain outstanding indebtedness of the Seminole Utilities Authority, and for paying principal and interest on indebtedness incurred on behalf of the city for the foregoing purposes. So, city manager, can you kind of shrink that down into a nutshell of what all that means?
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, I'll take a liberty right here to introduce to you the former and current youth city council that came up with the idea that brought us to tonight. If you don't mind, if you guys could just stand and be recognized, everyone that's been a former or current youth city council, these are the folks that put it in play, helped us design it, and now they're here to see if it gets to the finish line. So, congratulations, number one. Thank you very much. You can be seated. So, the Seminole Community Foundation, private 501(c)(3), was kind enough to meet these folks' needs, and they asked for a grant from that foundation to hire an architect that would render some plans that would be a family entertainment center. The family entertainment center that they designed ended up being a bowling alley, an arcade within a redemption center, so you can win stuffed teddy bears, et cetera, and also a laser tag zone with a restaurant built into the center. So, there were things that have not made the cut, but we certainly have room for expansion, such as a putt-putt golf course, and I think there were a number of things. I don't want to single them out, but we have room for expansion. So, back to, I told you I'd tie that sewer line back into this. So, we had cut a deal with the landowner who is doing the big development across the road from the new high school, whereby we would run sewer under the highway and tie it in, in exchange for five acres of the prime land on Highway 9. So, we're there. We've got the land, we have a design. If you see scrolling in the back of the room, that is what the architects' renderings look like, what this facility might be. And then on the ESOL, we have the floor plan that I think most, Maya, you might not have seen it, but most of the student city council has seen and approved. So, what we're doing at this point is trying to find a way to pay for it. That's what the city council directed us to do almost two years ago. And so, what we are doing is we are extending a 1-cent sales tax. This is not a tax increase. It is taking a sales tax that is currently in place, and we're extending it. So, I think it's a good way to get it done. It's a really neat project. We're a little, you know, I think it's going to be a big hit, I know it will be. We have a lot of interest in the community. Once the young folks started really talking this up, we got a lot of input from the older folks that said, hey, we used to do this all the time. In fact, we're doing it in Shawnee now, and we want a place of our very own. So, we feel confident enough to bring it to the city council for consideration. I know, I need to say thank you to all of you because of the hours that you spend in our work sessions, trying to bring it to this point and studying the financial impacts and the design. So, I need to mention that a lot of this was considered during our work sessions, and you guys spent quite a few hours contemplating what we're going to be doing. So, tonight, we're asking that you pass this ordinance, and that, and then the next item will be calling it for an election. The voters of Seminole will be able to decide if this is something that they want.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 4B. Consideration and possible action to approve Resolution Number 2022-14, a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of an election a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of an election on the question of extending the ten, the term of the levy of an existing one-cent excise tax and amending the purpose thereof as provided in ordinance number 1283.
motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Four C, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 1284 and ordinance amending ordinance number 866 of the City of Seminole, Oklahoma, providing for amending the purposes of the four cent, or four percent occupancy surcharge for constructing, equipping, operating, and maintaining a family entertainment and recreational facility to be constructed within the City of Seminole, and any remaining funds shall be utilized for the support of other recreational facilities and the annual Fourth of July events held by or on behalf of the City of Seminole, providing the effective date, providing that provisions are cumulative, and providing for severability. Questions on, on that? Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item four E, consideration and possible action to approve the employment of DA Davidson and Company as financial advisor and Johanning and Byram P L C, P L L C as bond counsel with respect to the sales tax and occupancy surcharge, election proceedings, and the financing of the corresponding projects.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe we may have skipped four D.
You skipped four D.
Four D?
D.
Oh, okay. We'll strike that. We'll move back to four D. At least you're paying attention. Thanks, I appreciate that.
You woke me up.
Consideration and possible action to approve resolution number 2022-15, a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of an election on the question of amending the purpose of the four percent occupancy surcharge, election proceedings, and the financing of the corresponding projects.
motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item four E, consideration and possible action to approve the employment of DA Davidson and Company as financial advisor and Johanning and Byram P L L C as bond counsel with respect to the sales tax and occupancy surcharge, election proceedings, and the financing of the corresponding projects. Motion to approve.
I have a question first.
Please.
Mayor, what's, so, I just, I guess I need some education. So, what is, what is the difference between a bond counsel and our city attorney handling this?
A lot.
Expertise.
A medic and a brain surgeon. That's what it comes in. Chris can probably tell.
Chris Byram has been our bond counsel for quite a while. I don't wanna say how many years, but...
Yeah, well, put in perspective, mayor and council members, the ordinance that we're amending, that amended the original ordinance, I've worked on the original ordinance in 93. In a nutshell, your, your city attorney handles local matters, uh, dealing with ordinances, uh, and items like that, the day-to-day affairs. Bond counsel deals with the legality of the bond issue, uh, the tax-exempt status of the bond issue, and putting together all the customary bond documents that, uh, are involved with the financing. It's a, it's a small niche of the law practice.
Small niche, big piles of paper.
Yeah.
I mean, yes.
We did that, and we're fine.
Yeah, we're putting together big black books that can put you to sleep in five.
Yes.
It's a, it's a very specialized field, believe me. It's, it's more than I would even, I couldn't work this office. It just goes in circles with me.
And I, Randy Nelson with DA Davidson was supposed to be here, but he had to tend to a, a matter with his family, um, in Wichita.
But they, let me just say this, they not only take care of the legal ends, they help with the financial end of it, they, they work with the, uh, I guess the brokers and everybody.
An underwriter, yes.
His underwriters.
We, we work with the underwriter to market and sell the bonds. And it's all contingent, obviously, from the sales tax passing and then you all approving the finance.
Thank you.
Officer.
I believe we have a motion on the table.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under current business, item five, consideration and possible action to approve the hazard mitigation grant programs, twenty-five percent match amount of $3,877.34 to be funded from special projects grants fund 92.
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes, sir.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item six, consideration and possible action to approve amending chapter eight, section eight dash six M of the City of Seminole Employees Policy and Procedures Manual as follows. Any permanent employee in good standing after having accumulated 720 hours of sick leave at regular pay will be cashed out annually in December for sick leave pay accumulated in excess of 720 hours. And upon retirement or separation of employment, any permanent employee in good standing with 20 years of service will be paid the balance of their accumulated sick leave up to 720 hours.
Steve, do we do the same thing with annual leave?
Yes, sir.
So, they get paid for both?
Yes. Just to give you a perspective, this does not apply to very many people. A lot of our staff, and this is not just ours, this is across the nation, they utilize that sick leave extensively. And, and most, I say, I should correct that, I'll say several other employees have zero on their sick leave. And, uh, most of us stay in the middle, you know, we'll have 200 hours of sick leave. But when you get to 720 hours, you've been here a long time and you just don't leave the job. And so, this is kind of a way of saying thank you for showing up. Most, if not all, of the employees that are eligible to get this lose the sick leave because 720 is the maximum that you can acquire or carry over. So, they lose whatever they've earned in sick leave that year because they just don't take sick leave.
So, before, Steve, we have the usual lose and now you're gonna pay them.
Right. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item seven, consideration and possible action to approve the contractual agreement with C V E C Fiber LLC to provide fiber optic internet services within the City of Seminole.
Motion approved.
Our city attorney, Brad, do you have some comments?
Yes, Zach is here. Let me, let me start by saying that we are very, very close in finalizing this agreement. There's some changes that need to be made. Zach and Sean, uh, and I, pretty well, Zach and Sean have, uh, sat down and they've, uh, created, I guess it was pretty, pretty nice, uh, uh, creation that they, they, they made as far as setting up a system for the city in order us, in order for us to get to where we needed to be. And I'll tell you that, you know, we've, this has kind of been a real novel area. There's a lot of evolving law, uh, with regard to the telecommunications industry and broadband, and it's just, wading through this is, is really a, it's really tedious. But, uh, we have received, I guess it was this week, earlier this week or late last week, uh, we received an agreement, uh, from their council that we had kind of been tossing back and forth. And I understand that, um, we're close, is what, what I understand, right?
Not to put words in other people's mouths, but, um, you know, based on the agreement, the revisions that we got back today, um, the response that I got from our council was that we're extremely close. Of course, he wants to read it a second time. Attorneys seem to have that trait, um, just to make sure of everything and we should be able to get this thing, for a second, to have it wrapped up by the end of the week, um, early part of next week, I would think, if I was...
And you might wanna tell them probably what we're agreeing to and so, so I don't get into the technical aspects of this, but it's really a neat thing.
Could I take one second here? Uh, we're briefing the council. Do you mind if I kinda give an overview for the public?
Please.
Audience? So, uh, about a year ago, the city council said, "We need more and better fiber optics. We need more broadband for our, uh, city." And we want, uh, we want it more reliable. And so, we began to shop around. We've, we've decided, the city council has decided that Canadian Valley Electric is, is the go-to on this. So, this is more the final piece of the negotiations that have been going on to get more and better bandwidth within the city limits. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Zach.
And to your point, today is my one-year anniversary at C V C Fiber. So, um, it has been a journey and I've gotten to know most of you pretty well. Um, but, you know, when we were sitting down, looking at this and, and everything, kinda came up, um, so Sean and I, uh, got together and we sat down and designed what we saw as the optimal, um, network for the city. Not necessarily based on what can we afford, but what do we actually need to get there? And there's a lot going on in Seminole. I mean, it's an exciting time to be here. And so, what we came up with is basically a fully redundant network that is going to be able to alleviate a lot of the burdens that Sean may have with the network as it's set up. So, if you're not familiar with how you guys are, are set up currently, um, you know, you have an internet circuit that's being provided by, um, suddenly going into the police department, emergency management, stuff like that. You have one that's going into the city hall, um, as far as enterprise-type circuits. Then you have a lot of other just little island circuits into your other buildings. Nothing's really interconnected together, other than they can all talk via the internet. So, when we were sitting down, it was, okay, what are, what is a true enterprise network look like for the city? And so, what we came up with is a wide-area network that connects all of the, the city's facilities. So, we're talking everything from city hall to out by Sportsman Lake and pretty much everywhere in between. So, everything is gonna be able to, um, have this private, if you will, um, wide-area network with, for the city's services. And then there are still the two data access locations, which will remain at the city hall, as well as, um, the emergency management, police department, all your, your vital services. The other benefit there, too, is that those two locations are now linked together for redundancy. So, if something goes down, um, you can always revert back and they'll be able to see the city hall. If city hall, for some reason, was to go down, they can revert and see everything that's going on at, um, the emergency management building or the police department, where that load, that circuit lands. The nice thing for what it does for the city is especially in today's day and age from a, uh, we all hear about ransomware and that's a big fear for most every IT manager across the nation. And so, he will be able to put firewalls, the security, at those two locations and manage those, and then manage, everything else is gonna sit behind him. So, it's really gonna consolidate. Instead of everybody being able to have a direct pipe out to the internet, he's able to consolidate that network, manage it in a true enterprise fashion. This is essentially the exact same design that I put together earlier in my career for Tulsa Public Schools, who has seventy-some odd schools. They would have thirty of them that are connected to one building or to one data hub. They had another thirty, forty schools connected to another data hub, and then the two hubs were connected together. And, and that's the true enterprise solution that, that most every city's looking for. Very few cities of this size even has that option, you know, due to budget constraints and things of that nature. And what we're working with this agreement is that we'll be able to provide those data services, um, we'll credit that back, um, the cost of that as a part of the agreement.
So, you, you might wanna tell them, you, you explain what the city benefits are to the general public.
To the general public, um, so, essentially, at the end of the day, as a part of the agreement, that's about $75,000 worth of, of network services that are gonna be, um, credited as a part of this agreement by C V C Fiber. It's both a show of the agreement that we're putting forth, as well as the partnership that we expect to have with the City of Seminole. You know, there is a telepathy piece of that. That would be the only, um, uh, cost that the city would incur. However, it does actually increase over your current phone solution. So, the current phone solution that the city has is about, what, six-years-old, I think you said? Six, seven-years-old? Someone there, um, on-prem PBX. So, if the hardware dies at the, um, at the city hall, all the phones are gonna be down.
Zach.
There's nothing else going on.
I, I think what he meant was, the general public wants to know if you're gonna give them one gig of speed for $79.
An underground fiber.
And it's gonna be underground.
You get into my nerd world and I could talk all day long about, about the, uh, about the network side of things. So, that's why, you know, what should've been probably a forty-five-minute conference with Sean was about an afternoon. So, what it benefits for the, the city, what C V C Fiber is gonna bring is exactly what we came in here about a year ago and explained. So, we're building an XGS pond, um, which is a ten-gig backbone, um, so we can deliver up to 2.4 gigabits per second symmetrical. So, 2.4 gigs is download and upload to your house. Um, our base package is 150 megs, sixty-five bucks. You can get a gig for $85. That includes the hardware, that includes everything, you know, everything that you need to get your internet up and running for the residents. And we're looking at, as soon as we get this signed, within, um, we've committed to within a year, we will have that built out for you guys. And so, we're, we're right here at the hurdle. Just get over this last little one, get it signed, and we should be able to get you all squared away.
So, basically, in a nutshell, they are going to give, they're going to credit back to the city our internet services. So, it would be really at no cost. The only thing that would be a cost to us would be our phone service, which will be internet-based voiceover, is that right?
Yeah, it's hosted voiceover ID, um, so, it will be able to tie in, um, both with the handsets that are set on the desk, as well as give the option for the employees that need it and things of that nature, mobility access. So, if you have, have employees that are out in the field, um, or, or anything of that nature, maybe we get back to where they need to work from home, they'll be able to have that soft phone on a tablet or on a laptop or on their cellphone, and it still flows through the city's, uh, phone system.
You said sixty-five to eighty-five dollars a night?
The, the two-point-four, the two-point-four gig is $150. We do participate in the Affordable Connectivity Program, or ACP, um, which all of this area is considered tribal lands for that program. So, um, if, if you meet the qualifications, which is 200% of the poverty level, um, as well as a host of others, including, um, WIC, SSI, if you have anyone in your household that receives free or reduced lunches, um, student wives and things of that nature, they would qualify for the household. And that would provide a $75 credit or up to a $75 credit, which means, um, those households would be able to get 150 megs for free or the, the one gig, uh, for $10.
That's crazy. And all of your system is going to be, at least all your fiber will be underground and it will be hanging from...
That is correct. So, we will be building that underground. I know that was a big concern for the, um, the city as a whole and especially this council, um, especially in light of, of recent activities. It's become a must-have to have data communications. And so, building that underground is gonna give you that safety and security that, you know, a tornado, heaven forbid, um, isn't gonna come through and knock out communications, you know, for days on end, whenever you're needing to be able to work from home or needing to file those applications and get assistance.
So, after you have any questions?
Yeah.
I just wanna let, what I'm gonna ask you guys to do is to approve the, the agreement. Subject any final revisions by staff and council. The agreement will be, obviously, in substance, and if there's anything that's not, you know, I think is just material changes, we'll bring it back in front of the council. I don't think that's gonna happen. Uh, we've worked too long to get to where we're at. And I think this, the, the latest changes to this, again, these are more, a lot of this is boilerplate, you know, things that we normally do, so. Mr. Mayor?
We do have a question.
I have two questions, please. Will there be any income for the City of Seminole as far as city taxes? I know when you get a bill from AT&amp;T or whatever, off-country, add-on charges. What about the bill for Canadian Valley?
So, I assume probably what you're talking about more so from AT&amp;T and stuff is typically on the phone side. So, there's state and federal charge, uh, taxes and surcharges that have to be collected, um, for those services. And so, that's like 911 services or the federal USF charges, things of that nature. I, for sure, don't have the power to, to grant those and not collect those. Um, that's, that's definitely at a federal level and at a state level. Every telecommunications carrier has to collect those. And so, those funds will be collected and then, um, distributed, you know, accordingly. For the things that require sales tax, definitely you're collecting sales tax, um, on those. So, things such as, you know, on like hardware leases. So, if you have, you lease a wireless access point, that's gonna have a sales tax associated with it that, that is paid out.
Follow-up question. Once you have contract in hand and boots are on the ground, how long is it until you can say Seminole's been covered, city limits?
So...
Time frame, time frame?
My goal is as soon as possible, as, as well as C V C Fiber, because we do have that capital outlay. You know, our commitment is 12 months. So, within 12 months, we're expecting to have, have everything covered as far as that goes, services ready to roll, um, ideally sooner than that. You know, the, the con to doing things underground is that it does take longer, um, to complete that type of, of a bill than it does going to overhead. Because when you're overhead, you just string it up on the poles, assuming that, you know, there's clearance and everything like that, it's pretty straightforward. Underground, we will be working with the city, um, hand-in-hand to make sure that all those new sewer lines that Brian's been working very hard at getting put in are not, you know, being hit by the bore engravings and things like that. And so, you know, a lot of planning is gonna have to go into that because there's a lot of facilities that are in the ground, and we realize that. And that's why we think that the 12 months is, is a very comfortable, um, time frame.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I believe, did we have a motion?
We did, but the motion needs to be changed.
Okay.
What Brad said, said, uh, approve the contract with allowance for the city and staff to, uh, make changes to the final agreement, is necessary? Make any, yeah, make any non-substantive changes.
Okay, Zach. Okay, so we have that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Cory Crabtree?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yeah, I think that's a great thing that we're doing for the citizens of Seminole. I know it's not time to talk about that stuff, but I, I said yes in a big way.
Thank you. Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Right, with that, we will move into remarks and inquiries of mayor and council members. I'd first like to, again, welcome and thank the youth council members that worked on this project and our new members that are continuing to meet on a monthly basis and discuss items and hear from speakers. I, I think that's great for the city and hopefully for your future, and you may choose one day to be sitting here and making decisions for your city or another city, wherever you're, you're living. So, uh, thank you and, and congratulations. One of the things I think that, that, um, one of our council members mentioned, they were talking about grants, uh, I think it would be nice to have an update of maybe the total amount of grants we'd received for last year or last fiscal year and maybe at the end of this one, um, for this year and, and next year. I know that'll probably be a lot of work, but I think it would be nice to be able to not just let us understand how much money we've been able to receive, but also our citizens to understand. And I believe you guys did that a year ago or a little more, but I think it would be nice to have a refresher because it's easy for us to forget about how much money we've been fortunate enough to receive. And, uh, so I think that would be great. Family Entertainment Center, you know, this is something we've heard for years and probably years before we were even on the council, there's nothing to do for kids. Well, this goes a little further in families and, and kids, and not only families here, but potential of families from out of town coming in and using this facility while they're also enjoying the softball fields or baseball fields or basketball or whatever it might be around Seminole. You know, I hope our citizens will consider this when it goes to a vote, that, um, you know, this is something that, that we've heard for a long time and it's, it's the opportunity for our citizens to agree with that and move it forward. So, I would encourage our citizens to, to do that. That, that would be something, I think, big for our city, to be able to invest into that and have that for, for families to utilize. Uh, one of the things, one other thing I wanna mention is, and it was in the paper, One of the things, one other thing I want to mention is, and it was in the paper, but it is an essay contest for eighth graders. And it's any eighth grader in the state of Oklahoma, really addressed it kind of to the eighth graders in the county, but specifically our eighth graders that go to school in Seminole. The essay is on what would I do if I were mayor? And it's the opportunity for the eighth graders to basically state what would they do to improve their city or make improvements to benefit the citizens of the city. And you can go online, I believe it was in the paper, you can go online and look at the rules that you have to follow. And, you know, there is a prize for the top three winners, so you have an opportunity to win some money if you're chosen. This is all done by the Oklahoma Municipal League and the mayor's conference or council. And I encourage every student to be able to do that. I know I've been contacted by a teacher to maybe meet with some of the students for questions. And so if anyone else is interested in that, please let me know and I'd be willing to answer questions. I'm not planning on going in and just telling them what I do. I want them to ask questions and to think about what they might ask to help them understand what might be involved with making decisions. But cities are different. We have mayor-led cities and we have city manager-led cities. So there is a difference and that's important for the students to understand that as well. So I just want to encourage all the eighth graders to participate in that and look forward to seeing a winner from Seminole County. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Ward One, Larry Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It never ceases to amaze me how well things are ran in the city of Seminole. We get things done, our staff gets things done. I don't do those, except here, talk a little bit and vote, but our staff gets it run every day. And they do a good job. That's it.
Thank you. Ward One, Dana Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome everyone to Board One. Quite a few things going on. Steve had stopped by before the meeting started and talked about, this is an exciting time in Seminole right now. There's just a lot of, lot of things going on and I'll tell you, it's, you know, kind of that phoenix that rises from the ashes type of deal. You know, what we went through in May, I really do feel like sparked this renewed energy, not only with, you know, our leadership, but our citizens as well. And I really do a lot of, believe a lot of that was already there. It's just sometimes we forget that, like Larry had mentioned, that, you know, people are working feverishly behind the scenes to make sure that our city is running smoothly and is a great place to live at the end of the day. So just with that said, there's a couple of events that went on this past month that I just wanted to mention. I forget the actual name of it. It was the, I consider it Halloween carnival that was held here in this space. And I came to visit and it was really nice. You saw a lot of families with their kids, you know, just a lot of, you know, businesses who donated food and their time. And, you know, it was, it was great to see that community, that sense of community. So I want to thank everyone who was involved with that. Last week, there was, I believe it was on Friday, there was a really, first of its kind in the country, a collaboration between the city of Seminole and the Health Department. And they're actually using that collaboration as a model for the rest of the country. Seminole County was chosen because of our, kind of our poor health status. But what they looked at, when they were looking at Seminole County, was all of the different possible collaborations that could be done to address those health disparities and health issues. And so there were quite a few folks who participated. There were some mobile units and the Seminole Nation, City of Seminole, State Health Department, all, you know, got together at one time. And it was pretty exciting. So I feel like hopefully maybe this will turn into an annual event, but I do want to say thank you to Steve and Bree for working with that team. It was just a simple call to Steve and said, hey, they're looking for somewhere in Seminole County. And next thing you know, we're on the planning committee and it's already, it's already done. So thank you for that. There's a pet food drive going on this Saturday at Walmart. If anybody wants to stop by and go in and buy some dog food and drop it off and donate it to the animal shelter, it's much needed. And we'll be there all day. And then just also for the entertainment center, so exciting. And for the youth council folks that are still here and your parents, and thank you so much. This is, this is something that you all came up with, which is really exciting because we didn't come up with it. We came up with a way to make it, you know, happen, but you guys are, you thought of it, you designed it, you advocated for it, and now it's going to happen. So, you know, ten years from now, you can look at that and say, I did that. That's, I had a part of that. And to me, that's the biggest, I don't know, I feel like that's the biggest hallmark of community, is ownership. And we're going to have a whole generation of Seminole citizens who have this ownership into their town. And I think it's really exciting and I'd love to see a whole lot more come from our youth. Exciting, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ward Two, John Kramer. Ward Two, Eddie Foreman.
Well, I'd just like to say also that how pleased I am to be part of an energetic city. I mean, given what's going on with the new wastewater treatment plant that's going to come online, the entertainment center, the improvements at the airport. And I know from being in a similar position that Steve's got to feel very good because, you know, if you have new projects in mind, it breathes life into the city. And it breathes life into the city employees as well because they know they're part of a vibrant community. That's it.
Thank you. Ward Three, Tim Poplin.
I just want to say thank you to our council because we stood behind what we promised the kids back when they first brought this to us. And as a council, we said, if you find a way to do it and come up with some good plans and we'll listen, and we did, and they did. So I'm glad we could go on and on about stuff, it's late. Thanks, everybody. Thank y'all for coming and people who've come to the meeting tonight. Appreciate y'all. Bye-bye.
Ward Three, Corey Crabtree.
First off, I don't know how many of you have really participated much in Halloween in the city of Seminole, but this year was pretty extraordinary. I think there was some kind of event from the Thursday before all the way through Monday night, something going on in town, whether it was the trick-or-treat, carnival, whatever it might have been. But there was a lot of enthusiasm in town and thank you for everyone who dumped me in the tank. It was quite cold, but we lived. So something else, I was, we went down to eat at Don's Zero's tonight, come out and I looked up the street and saw all the lights downtown. I think that's probably the first time I've seen that end of the street with the new lights and they looked pretty spectacular. They were, I mean, the street was really lit up, so it looked great. I don't know if anybody else is, I don't think anybody's mentioned this, but the Veterans' Parade is Saturday, is that right? So if you guys are coming out to support your veterans, thank them for their service. I believe it's at noon if I'm not mistaken, so.
It's a little early.
Is it eleven? Okay, eleven o'clock. So, and also, again, thank you for the youth council for showing up. And then thank you for Canadian Valley for putting Ward Three as the first mode of install for your fiber. I'll be your guinea pig, just come to my house, I'll show you how to get in. That's all I have.
Scratch those last statements, please. Ward Four, Chris Anson.
Oh, well, yeah, we do have a great city and a great staff. And I'd just like to mention, you know, that a good majority of our staff have been here for quite some time. I mean, I can think of, you know, I mean, I could number, especially their city hall, you know, take the lead and put all this together and you do a great job. And when we have new positions, you do a great job finding the right people and filling them. And they end up being here for a long time and, you know, show dedication. So I appreciate that. But I would like to make one other comment that I noticed this year during Halloween and trick-or-treat. My neighborhood usually gets hit pretty hard and we kind of rotate either being at our neighbor's house or being at my house. But I noticed this year I got to sit outside a little bit more since it wasn't at my house. And I noticed a lot of people who actually parked and walked with their kids. In the past years, we've seen it where everybody just pretty much stayed in their cars and followed their kids around. And when you live in a neighborhood that has a lot of cul-de-sacs, that makes it very difficult and very dangerous for the kids who live there to be able to walk and trick-or-treat in their own neighborhood. I certainly don't mind the people coming in, but I do, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the people who park and actually walk with their families instead of just drove, you know, in and out of all the circle. Thank you.
Ward Four, Trace Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. Same thing as far as the youth council, that's fantastic with the deal there. Also, we've got constituents in our ward that are really excited about the trickle drive being resurfaced. And one of the stop signs at Robinwood and Phillips, which was a nice gray, is really sparkling red down the street. Really good about that. And my wife had also said something about when I do a van drive, it was concrete barriers and everybody always dropped off into, and that's really amazing. Spectacular, as far as, you know, city council, thanks for putting this stuff in the flood before we can get these things approved. Again, the Veterans Parade is one of them. Also saw something on Facebook where we got another new restaurant coming into town and there's a gentleman, so I don't know much about it, but Southern Sands, I'm excited they're going to have some real food for once, post some fries, which I don't know if you've ever seen. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports. City Manager, Steve Sex.
I was, you're on. I'm on. Okay. I was saying before the council, I don't recall a time that it's been so good and so many things happening in Seminole. This is, this is just phenomenal what's going on. We've talked among our staff about this being the launchpad, that we've all been knowing that it was going to happen someday. And now it's occurring, it's exciting to be a part of it. This council has provided leadership and certainly allowed us to have a say in some of the design of what you guys want to see and how the community's coming forward. So this is good stuff. To our youth city council, man, what a strong statement. You matter, right? So going forward as you become adults, bigger adults, I know most of you are already adults, but it matters. You get a play. I mean, you're at the table. Just make sure that what you dream up, that you really want, because people like this will make it happen, right? So now that, now that this part is through, I hope that you'll follow it through with a good campaign. I think to get the voters out and vote for your project is the second half of the battle. You've got the first half won, the second half is getting the yes votes out to vote for your project. So we can't wait to see it, cannot wait. I need to mention to the city council, next month, we are going to be moving the city council meeting, the regular meeting, to the community center, to the community room up by the golf course, Pro Shop, okay? For some reason, Matt felt the need to rent this room and get a little bit of income instead of giving it to us for free. So he kind of gave me the boot. And so we're going to be meeting at the community center next month, we'll be up there, okay? And we'll send out plenty of reminders, but if you have any citizens that need to know, you might want to notify them.
I've heard that these need some money to pay for a lot of what the damage has been made.
Yeah? I don't know the backstory, it sounds like there is one. So I'll give you a quick update. The Seminole Urban Renewal Authority has been going through a lot of study on what they're going to do with some of the buildings damaged downtown. I think they've got a fairly solid plan developing. They're going to have a meeting very soon with investment groups. Not a public meeting, this is going to be a deal where one or two of the Urban Renewal Authority members want to speak to investment groups. If anyone is really interested and wants to be a part of that, you can contact me and we'll try to get you in there. So in the next month, certainly probably next couple of weeks, you're going to be hearing about tax increment finance meetings. So to refresh your memory, if you recall this Seminole Town Center drawing that you guys have seen for about a year now, that is going, they're going to be trying to form a tax increment finance district. And what that means is that we're going to be freezing the property taxes at whatever level that raw land was at. So it's just for demonstration purposes, if they paid a thousand dollars last year for the property tax on that pasture, then they would continue to pay that same thousand dollars. But if there's a hotel, restaurants, strip mall, new housing, all of that property tax that that generates would go to help pay for the streets, the sewer, the water, all the infrastructure that's going to be going into that big development. So you're going to be hearing more and more about the tax increment meetings. So we are quite a ways from May the fourth tornado. If you start getting phone calls, please feel free to patch me in or direct to me because we're going to be sending out letters, letters of demolishing some of the structures that were damaged that don't seem to be making any progress. We're going to, it's time to get some of those taken down. For the most part, we've done really well with the limb cleanup and things like that. It's time for some of the structures that were damaged to come alongside and get better, all right? So we are going to be sending out those letters. If you get contacted, please feel free, we'll bring in James Moon and Sharon and we're really easy to work with. Brad is good and we can, we can develop a plan, but if we don't know your plan, we're just going to assume that you're going to do nothing and we're going to get rid of some of the blight that is starting to creep up in our community. You know, we're, it seems like at least maybe once every couple of years, we start seeing issues creep up with our animal control and maybe even internally in the dog pound. You're probably going to be hearing a little bit more from me next month, but I'll just give you a heads up. We're going to talk a little bit more about the specifics of how we want that to improve, so just a heads up. So your staff, your crack staff is ready. If you've seen the Farmer's Almanac, you know that this winter is predicted to be extremely rough. So Bryant Baker and the Street Department, and of course, really that means all of Public Works because they team up so well across the, all the individual departments, they do fantastic. But they have got their new brine machine, the mixer and the dispenser. So I apologize to the young people in school in advance, there probably won't be any snow days because we're on top of it, all right? So we're anxious to see how well it works, but we're excited that it's coming online. We should have it online before the first snow. So that's, first, appreciate the city council for giving that to us. You know, I had a, had a true pleasure of being able to visit with one of our high schools, area high school students, Mahia. Thank you for coming to see me. It was, it was pretty cool to be interviewed. I don't get that pleasure very often. And she asked some extremely intelligent questions and I think, man, the more they can learn about how their government works, the better off we're all going to be in the long run. So thank you for that. Chris, I just want to mention that during the Halloween trick-or-treat, that the tractor supply parking lot was full. And we, there were several of us from the neighborhood across the street that were guiding them to your front door.
Did you fly or was that for his house?
We put up flyers and had flashlights guiding them your way. So they made it across the highway safely. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Brad Carter.
Just a few things. So as Steve said, you know, we talked about the infrastructure upgrades on this CEBEC project, this fiber project. I really don't think we all know how big this is. I mean, this is a huge, huge animal. And the amount of effort that goes into this... I mean, this is a huge, huge animal, and the amount of effort that goes into this, it's not just approving agreement, it's mapping the, the city right of ways, it's bringing them in, it's looking at the plans, it's coordinating this over the next year, and so there's just a lot to this, so. But I wanted to say that we will, I will probably be back and, and talk to you about maybe rescinding or modifying some of our telecommunications ordinances to basically fit with our agreement here and to make it more consistent. So, we, you know, like I said, we were going a little bit, hip-shooting that a little bit in a way because of the evolving law and due to the, due to the agreement that we have here and some of the, the knowledge and expertise of CIVEC's council and their staff, you know, I, I think that there's some things that we probably can, can modify just to, to, to make sure that it's all streamlined and running the same direction, so I'll probably ask you to do that. The, I wanted to say about your, your student government or the, the program that you have, which I really haven't, I knew what it was, I've spoken to, to this group, my daughter was in, Maya, who was here just a few minutes ago, she's left, of course, she doesn't want to hear her dad embarrass her, but, you know, she was a part of that, and she drove back from Norman today and voted for the first time in a national election, in all of our elections, and she, she came here to see this, and, you know, I think that, of course, that has to do a lot with her mother, you know, you better get home and vote, or kill ya type thing, but she, she really does believe that, and that, that's a seed that was planted, really, with, with what Steve and Bree and everybody's done, so I'll just say that that's something that's personal to me, and I watched, you know, all these kids just come up in this, and I hope and I know that it's, it's worthwhile, I hope we keep doing it. The last thing I want to say, and again, these two things I've just mentioned has nothing to do with city attorney business, but, you know, Veterans' Day is coming up, and I just wanted to highlight something that, that I was very passionate about, but I have a, I had a friend that I grew up with, and I don't mind telling you that he, he lives here and he operates his family's business over, across from Richards, Buddy Crowe, he's the Magneto Shop. They've repaired lawn mowers and small engines in Seminole for a long time. His dad was a veteran, Navy veteran, and he died about six or eight, well, longer than that, probably 10 years ago, 11 years ago, and his wife Kay has continued that business with Buddy, and when the tornado hit, they had no insurance on that. That is their livelihood, none. And through the efforts of the Arts Council and the American Legion and Jacob and Herbert Gomez, who had an air conditioning business, or have, have one, the Community Foundation and State Street Animal Hospital, Dr. Kuhn, they now, if you drive by that building and look, they have a new roof, it's painted. Ms. Crowe and Buddy, they lost their other son this, this year, and so it's just them now. So, they've had quite a bit of challenges, and then their business is destroyed, and that's the type of thing that we're all here, we've all talked about in a roundabout way. But if you look at that building and see how Jackie, Dill, and all the Arts Council people that participated in that, Ms. Crowe wanted that building painted green and white because both of her boys played Seminole football, her grandson did, and grew up here, graduated from Seminole High School, and if you'll look at that, it's a green and white building, and understand they're still going to be doing some more. So, I just wanted to highlight those individuals and those people that did that and those organizations because without that type of help, they didn't have the money for this. And that's a business that's back in business, you know, so anyway, I want to thank you. And then, Veterans' Day is Friday, and you want to hear a good, a good presentation, go to the Methodist Church about 1:30, and you'll, you'll get a, you'll get a good one to highlight one of our veterans in Seminole, so that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. I want to welcome our guests that we had with us today. Appreciate you coming out, seeing what we do, and, you know, we, we'd like to have more people out, but thank you for coming. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Sure.
Lumen County Committee, something I might do this next meeting, they're going to have a Christmas tree auction, they're going to auction off six fully rippled Christmas trees at 7:30, 7/28, on a Monday. Doors open at 5:30, auction 6:30. All proceeds go to Lumen County. Get out there at 7:30. Cool. Get out there.
Thank you. Okay? Thank you. I'd still entertain a motion for adjournment.
Well, there's one other thing. There's no, there's a free food for veterans in this building that's coming.
When?
This coming Saturday after the parade.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?